Very good evening, everyone. Today is Monday, July 27, 2015. It's my honor to call the regular meeting of the City of Burnsville Planning Commission to order. Welcome, Commissioners.
Welcome, Chair.
Staff, welcome. To our viewing and listening audience, we welcome you. Thank you for your time and your interest. Commissioner Bradrick is not feeling well today, and Commissioner Thomas has another commitment, so they will not be with us. First item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. The agenda today includes approval of minutes of the July 13, 2015, regular meeting. Item three, continued public hearing application from Soccer Blast Minnesota, Inc., for a PUD amendment for a building addition with fabric exterior located at 3601-145th Street West. Item four, public hearing application from Costco for a planned unit development amendment to expand the number of fuel dispensers and the canopy at 14050 Burnhaven Drive. Item five, a public hearing application from Aswellford Family Limited Partnership for a PUD amendment for a building addition and remodeling to the existing Walzer Subaru dealership at 60121st Street. Item six, another public hearing application from Aswellford Family Limited Partnership for an IUP amendment to allow an open storage lot for vehicle inventory at the vacant property, Lot 8, Block 1, Burnsville Industrial Park. Item seven, another public hearing application from Janet Zowinski for a lot width variance to allow for the creation of two lots that are less than the minimum 75-foot lot width standard at 990 Pershing Circle. Item eight, another public hearing application from Walzer Real Estate, LLC for a PUD amendment to allow an open sales rental lot without a structure at 14900 Buckhill Road. Item nine, updates, and then adjournment. Any additions to the agenda? Any changes, Commissioners? Staff? Do I hear a motion to adopt the agenda?
So move.
Move Commissioner Benke?
Second.
Second Commissioner Levy? All in favor? Do you say aye?
Aye.
Pass on a 4-0 vote. Next item, approval of minutes from the July 13, 2015, regular meeting. Any corrections, changes?
None.
Staff?
Staff had one. Mr. Chair, bottom of page two, staff recommended continuing the public hearing to allow, it should say "the applicant" instead of "the application." Time to revise the exterior design, and we'll correct that.
Make that correction. Any other changes?
That's it.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
So move.
Move Commissioner Benke?
Second.
Second Commissioner Levy? All in favor?
Aye.
Three, I will abstain, I wasn't here at the last meeting, so pass on a 3-0 vote. Item three, this is a continued public hearing application from Soccer Blast Minnesota, Inc., for a PUD amendment for a building addition with fabric exterior, property located at 3601-146th Street West. Mr. Slenya?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, Commissioners. Again, this is a continued public hearing from your last meeting on the 13th. The application in front of you is for an amendment to the PUD for a permanent building expansion to the east side of the existing Soccer Blast. The applicant has proposed a PVC fabric roof and gable ends. It would be, the base would be textured with a metal panel system. The design was of significant discussion with your, with this board last meeting. The footprint would cover the location of the existing dome and play area. It would be looking at the east and west elevation. This is the textured metal panel. And what you see here on a two-dimensional screen would be the angle of the roof line for the PVC fabric. It is a high-tension fabric. It does satisfy building code, snow loads, applicable fire requirements, fire code ratings. At the meeting, at the last meeting on the 13th, the Planning Commission discussed the aesthetics of the, specifically, the north and south elevations. Previously, the applicant had looked at overhead doors, doors along the base. That was changed. The applicant was looking for a slightly different design and has proposed trans windows at the transition point between the metal paneling and the fabric. This design shows white roof design as well as white gable ends. The metal panel, the textured panel, is now two-color schemes rather than one. Previously, the base was all gray, and I'll pass this image around. It was all one color. The commission and the applicant discussed lighting in that up to match with the white. In the background, I had mentioned a white panel. I don't know, depending what light you're in, this looks a little off-white. I'd say it's more light beige, but I'll pass this around. But that would give the base of the structure a little more detailing. It would also provide some horizontal, more horizontal character, more vertical character than was previously designed. The applicant, and I'll let, I'll let Ms. Carter address this, there was discussion of making the same changes to the south facade as well as the north elevation. There were concerns with that with maintenance, and I'll let the applicant address that right now. The proposal would be for the textured panel in a single color. The same windows that you see on the north end right now are not on the south end. There was indication that, at the last meeting, the Planning Commission was supportive of the roof design, some discussion on colors, but the use and the material seemed agreeable to the Planning Commission. As we discussed, there was a continuation to allow the applicant some more time to work on this, and the image in front of you has been revised since the last meeting. The public hearing was not closed, it is still open, and Commissioners, I'll stand for any questions you have.
Thank you, Mrs. Slenya. Commissioners, any questions for Mrs. Slenya?
Not knowing the position of the last little call I drove by there, and the, I guess it would be the south elevation. To me, it looks to be pretty well sheltered from the residences beyond the tree line. So the aesthetics on that side, I would not see as, you know, needing the fancy, I'm gonna call it fancy aesthetics, of the entry side. I don't have a problem with that. Also, looking at the existing structure with the white roof, I know there was discussion about what color the roof should be. I think a white roof would be very much in keeping with the existing white roof that's on the, on the current building. So that would be my input.
Thank you, Commissioner Levy. Would you like just to bring up Ms. Carter, the applicant?
Please.
Ms. Carter, could you please come up? Just mention your name and address for the record, please. And welcome.
Thank you. Good evening. Tannis Carter, 18275 Kingsway Path, Lakeville, Minnesota, 55044.
Welcome.
Thank you.
There were some points raised that we would like your explanation on, and the first one was the, the material, only on one side. If you can explain why the south side, I think, is not included in this.
I think it'll be the same material going 17 feet up, because we do want the steel panels all the way around. But the discussion was the color, and we wanted, we wanted to mimic the existing building, and so I think the architects did come up with a pretty good plan, and I think Commissioner Steve had, had mentioned that this might, and I agreed, I think this is going to be a good solution. And the colors that you had sent around, did you send both around, Chris?
No, I just, I changed, just changed the lighter one. I think the darker one's right in that.
Okay. Because the darker one is going to be kind of the frame, if you will, and if you...
Yeah.
And, and if you... And I had the samples, and I know they were just taken off the building, Chris, because I didn't have anything from 10 years ago, but they are very similar. They had sent me quite a few samples, and those are the ones that are really close to the existing buildings. So, so I think that accomplishes what we had...
Thank you.
...wanted to do. And Chris had mentioned the, and Ms. Commissioner, or excuse me, Plank, do I say Commissioner? I'm sorry.
Yes.
Commissioner Levy, the, the windows on the south side, thank you for bringing up the trees, first of all, because I had stood in front of it too, and said, "Those trees are so tall, if my neighbors from the south were to look up, they're gonna look right into the trees, and they're not really going to see windows." My other thought in opposing that idea is, there's been, through the years, quite a bit of vandalism to the south side of my building, and unfortunately, it can't be stopped. I can't police it all the time. So my thought of having windows that could potentially be vandalized somehow, or thrown rocks at, is just, it's not an excellent idea for me, because I just, ugh. So the other thing, and maybe more importantly, as I was talking to some of my staff members, is there's a lot of southern sun in the winter months that will come through those windows. So when people are playing soccer, and all of a sudden there's a glare of sun, not optimal. So the windows on the north side, there's not that effect, because we don't get that, because it's dark. So my, I'm requesting that there's not be windows on the south side, that we just keep them on the north side, or, yeah, on the, on the north side. And if it's okay to, on the east and the west and the south side, to just have that, either we can have the lighter or the darker color, but I'm opting for the lighter color.
Thank you. Any questions of Ms. Carter? Commissioner Benke?
Yeah, I think to elaborate on that a little bit, I agree with you on the sunlight for the windows on the south side with the games. I do think that that is gonna, would, could be a problem where, obviously, with the white fabric, you're gonna get plenty of, of light from that as well. Minor detail, this plan does show 17 feet, 18 feet of height? I don't know if you...
For the steel?
Yeah.
It's actually 17.
Okay, because the elevation calls that out. I do like the, what they did to add the color and block the front of the building. I do think it starts to pick up what happens in the adjacent existing structure. I did note, I did also go by, and I did note that this built, your building is not concrete, it's actually a metal panel existing.
Mm-hmm.
And that sort of set me back a little bit, because I didn't realize that you already were in a metal panel situation. I did see that the bulk of the building is light, although you do have sort of a dark pattern going down the sides. I didn't get around back and look, I'm assuming that that just goes all the way around.
The existing, it does, yeah.
Yeah. And I guess, to me, you know, dark light, obviously, it's your choice. If I express my opinion, I prefer the dark, but that's me. I do understand the vandalism issue, quite honestly. It's, it's a very private, protected area back there, and I don't think you're gonna be able to do too much about it, except monitor it with a camera or something, and see what you can do with that. But I do think that that minor change that you've given us here, I think, is tying it back together with the existing building better. Thank you.
Sure, of course.
Any other questions for Ms. Carter? Thank you, Ms. Carter.
Thank you.
Now, this, we had the public hearing, we'll just continue the public hearing. Anyone from the audience who desires to come up and address the commission on this matter, please feel free to do so now. Okay, going once, going twice, seeing no one, I close the public hearing. Commissioners, Commissioner Levy?
The staff, as I recall, made a recommendation of a blue roof. I'm not sure that, that I'm resolved in that yet. Does that recommendation still stand?
From, from a staff standpoint, it does. I did not reiterate that, based on the discussions. It seemed the, the Planning Commission was open to another color, so I did not reiterate that in the report, but certainly, you know, that was staff's opinion.
As I said, I'm partial to the white, because of the existing white roof.
I don't think, from what Mr. Slenya has said, I don't think he has a problem with the white. So, okay. Any other discussion?
I'll be abstaining from the board on this one.
Okay. All right. If there's none, do I hear a motion?
I would like to make a motion, Chair.
Go ahead, Commissioner Benke.
I'd like to have the Planning Commission recommend the City Council approval of the PUD amendment for the building addition with the fabric exterior located at 3601-145th Street West without the listed condition, although I should probably change the existing condition from "shall use blue" to "shall use white."
And I would just reference the revised plans.
Very, very good.
Motion moved by Commissioner Benke?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Levy? All in favor?
Aye.
Pass on a 3-0 vote. Commissioner Workman has abstained from voting, because his business, he has some business connection with this, the applicant. Okay, this matter will go to the City Council meeting on Monday, the 3rd of August. Thank you, and good luck. Moving on, item four on the agenda, another public hearing, an application from Costco for a planned unit development amendment to expand the number of fuel dispensers and the canopy at 14050 Burnhaven Drive. Ms. Garrus?
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, Commissioners. We have, the applicant is here this evening, individuals representing Costco, if there are questions for them. This is a public hearing for a, what we would consider to be a minor amendment to the planned unit development, which is the Costco project. The site is surrounded on three sides by streets, zoned B3 planned unit development, initially constructed and platted back in 2010, and then there was another amendment back in 2012 for some display pads, which are located closer to the main Costco building. The part of the site that we are dealing with tonight is solely the northern part of the site, where the gas facility is located. And the, what the application is, is to expand the canopy approximately 47% further to the east. What is shown up front is what the existing canopy looks like. The same materials are proposed for the addition as the existing materials. And what is proposed is basically to add another 28-by-88-foot addition on the east side of the canopy, which is shown on top. There will also be the addition of fuel dispensers, additional fuel dispensers for diesel fuels. And then on this graphic, the, this area up to the north will be underground storage tanks for both the diesel additive and diesel fuel. The only change, physical change, in the plan with regard to the parking lot is that there is an extension of about a 15-foot depth in this area, where the curb will be expanded, and this is to accommodate the underground storage tanks and the needs for that. This is a very small amount of impervious surface, just a little over, I believe, 227 square feet. That expansion of impervious surface does not trigger any additional stormwater requirements. It also, because the green space percentage for this site is based on a percentage as opposed to the number, the amount of green space that will be lost to this is so small that it does not change the overall percentage for green space. So the applicant has been able to develop a plan which basically has no deviations. They are not requesting any deviations for this. It meets all of the setback and other requirements of the zoning ordinance. The, basically, what will occur here is that this will allow for additional fueling for their customers. There is an outside attendant that is always present when the gas facility is open. And what will happen in the existing parking area is that there will be some restriping, which is shown on the plan, and the addition of the diesel gas pumps. This is a proposed enlarged site plan, which gives you the specifics, and here is where the addition is proposed on the canopy. Other changes related to the application are that they are proposing to modify the site signage. They have two signs now, very small signs. They are 27 square feet each. They are proposing actually to modify that signage, which will bring it into conformance to the current city sign ordinance. They will be installing the individual letter signage on the canopy, and actually, will be reducing signage from to 27-square-foot signs to to 20-square-foot signs. With regard to the application itself, staff is recommending approval of the overall PUD amendment. There is one item that we have identified, and it's not shown on the site plans, but there is a small temporary storage locker or cabinet that's located just south of the attendant facility, it backs up to the attendant facility, and staff is recommending that, that attendant building be removed. It does not conform to the materials requirements, and it's a temporary structure as opposed to a permanent structure. We've talked with the applicant, and they will most likely be looking at possibly an addition or another type of permanent solution for the storage of those shovels and minor things that are needed at that site. And that is, that is the direction that staff is pursuing with the applicant, and that also will bring it into conformance with the ordinance. With that, I can stand for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Garrus. I wondered about the shed, because I thought it was necessary in case of rain or the cold, the attendant can get some, you know, can get in there and get some shelter. But if it's non-conforming, then we have to do something about it, and I agree. Probably, they can look at something that is more confirming in the future. So, thank you.
The attendant, there is an actual permanent building where the attendant goes in, into. That is permanent. This is just a small, kind of a closet-type cabinet that's just been sitting on the back of that.
Okay.
So that's what we're asking to, to be removed.
Great. Thanks for that explanation.
Thank you.
Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Garrus? Commissioner Levy?
On the enlarged site plan that you got showing up here, the, I guess it would be the southmost gas pump or fuel pump seems to be different in length than the two northern ones. Can you, what is, why is that different? Do you know?
I'll have the applicant address that for you.
Okay. Any other question? Commissioner Benke?
Deb, I don't know if you can handle this or not, but you talked about some restriping. Is, is that, I mean, it looks like this actually starts to eat up some of the stacking that's already in place, because of the direction. I mean, I think the direction is probably better than the original proposal that you saw. But can you talk a little bit about how this change affects the stacking of the cars, you know, as they wait for, for access?
There will be, you're absolutely right, Commissioner Benke, there will be less stacking. The only way that they had to be able to move this without requiring encroachments into setbacks was to the east. There are issues with existing utilities on the west side, where they could not expand in that location. So they will be somewhat shorter, but again, there is an attendant that is always out at the site, and they anticipate that they will be able to provide additional opportunities for their customers. They don't see a lot of added customers using this at one point in time, but they do have an opportunity for an alternative fuel, which is diesel, which they have not had in the past.
Sure. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for Ms. Garrus? If not, thank you, Ms. Garrus. The applicant, who's representing Costco here, would you please come on up and mention your name and address for the record?
Good evening, Commissioners, thank you. My name's Angelo Bologna with Barkhausen Consulting Engineers, 651 Creekwood Boulevard, Troy, Missouri.
Welcome, sir.
Thank you.
I think the first question that came up was the length of the far-south pump, if I get it right.
The distance between the new pumps.
Well, Commissioner Levy, can you ask that question again?
The south pump seems to be longer than the two northern pumps.
This is so the dispenser, there's one dispenser that's up closer because of the distance to the underground storage tanks. We had to move that one a little bit more forward, so this way it's not impeding into the existing fuel tanks.
Okay. Thank you.
The existing underground tanks. Okay.
Any other question for him? Commissioner Benke?
Can you talk a little bit about how you, how your attendant, what his tasks are here, given the traffic?
The attendant's out there to monitor the site, help assist all the customers, even at times also route the traffic, sometimes during gas-fuel, but they're there purely for all the customers. And also as a safety, they're there to monitor any spills, do any cleanups if there is a spill, and check on the equipment. They're there for basically all the customer needs and the gas station.
Sure. And you're comfortable with the fact that this addition impacts the stacking, that, you know, your customers, basically, there's gonna be fewer of them in line than there were before? Is there, I mean, how would you talk about that?
Yeah, we, I mean, we've also, we've had traffic studies done with the existing gas station that we have expanded, and one of the analogies I use is, it's like going to the grocery store and opening up an extra line. You're having more people move through. We found, because Costco is a member-based gas station, there is only a slight increase. It's about 9% during off-peak and about 17% during peak hours of increase in traffic, but overall, there's less waiting time and higher volume moving, because all the gas, all the pumps will, will have both diesel and gasoline.
And old pumps?
All the pumps will be replaced, yeah. I will have to verify, because we have moved to placing diesel in all the dispensers, and this does help expedite all of the traffic through.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Yes, Commissioner Levy?
Diesel vehicles tend to be larger than gasoline vehicles, other than maybe some RVs. Do the lanes, the new lane striping and turnarounds and so forth, are they enough to accommodate larger vehicles that might come through, that are Costco members?
Well, Costco doesn't allow fleet vehicles or commercial vehicles, as far as large commercial vehicles, to fuel up at the gas stations.
Okay.
So you'll have more of your diesel trucks, diesel vehicles than your large, you won't have any really large delivery trucks going through.
I think his, I think his question too, RVs, somebody that has a membership, of course, but has an RV that runs on diesel, they would be allowed to fill up, and their vehicle is obviously, could be quite large.
Right. And, yeah, they can, I mean, there is enough room in between all the stacking areas, you know, there is the pass-through lanes.
Sure.
I know they usually try to prohibit a lot of the larger vehicles such as that, but, you know, you can't control all of...
Right.
Especially motorhomes.
And there's no, like, label for truck lane or something?
No, there's not.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you very much, sir. Appreciate you. Appreciate your contribution. Now, this application requires a public hearing. I now open the public hearing. Anyone from the audience who desires to come up and address the commission on this application can do so now. Going once, going twice. Seeing no one coming up to address the commission, I close the public hearing. Commission, it's over to you.
To me, Chair, I think this, you know, again, given the original layout that I saw in the background and what Costco has brought back to us with staff's assistance, I think it's quite a bit better.
Thank you, Commissioner Benke. There's no other discussion. Do I hear a motion? Commissioner Levy?
Let the planning commissioner recommend to the council that the approval of the PUD amendment to allow for additional fuel pumps and in addition to the existing canopy for the Costco fuel facility at 14050 Bernhaven Drive, subject to the following conditions. All conditions of previously approved PUDs for this site shall remain in full force and effect. The small shed located south of the attendant building shall be removed, and a signed permit shall be obtained prior to installation of exterior signage at the site.
Motion by Commissioner Levy, seconded by Commissioner Workman. All in favor?
Aye.
Pass on a 4-0 vote. This matter will go to the City Council at the August 3 meeting. And good luck. Thank you for coming. Commissioners, we move on to item five on the agenda, another public hearing, application from Asselford Family Limited Partnership for a PUD amendment for a public, for a building addition and remodeling to the existing Walzer Subaru dealership at 60121st Street.
Sorry, Mr. Commissioner. Chair, we have a number of PowerPoints.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, this is a public hearing. This is for the Subaru facility at 60141st Street. It is the existing facility. Subaru has requested, through a lease agreement with the property owner, a building addition. We would be doubling the size of the existing facility right now. This is the new car sales and service area, also used car sales are here. There is a small service area, a fewer number of bays than the applicant would desire. This is a high-volume store. They've been very successful in this new location since 2008, and they are proposing an expansion that would double the size of the facility. This is about 11,400 square feet. The proposed addition footprint is about 12,000 square feet. The site is zoned B4PUD. Open sales and rental lots are allowed through conditional use or, in this case, a planning or development. As I indicated, the site has been in operation since 2008. At that time, it was approved through planning. The long, narrow parcel as it exists was three individual lots. The Walzer Real Estate Group came in, platted those three lots into one, and constructed the existing facility that you see in gray. Through the success over the years, the applicant has requested additional automotive tech space. There would be reconfiguration of the car wash at the facility. It is proposed to run on the south side of the building, entering here, exiting here. Again, the car wash is not open to the public. It is for employees operating those vehicles only. The application does require two deviations, and those are outlined in the report. Those are the same, same two deviations that were included in 2008, and they get to the reduction in the required stall depth, and that is specifically in this area. The applicant has requested to continue the double stalls, double-deep stalls that are on the property. Staff has no concerns with that. The deviation is specific to the stall depth. I believe there is 33 feet between the two stalls in depth. The ordinance would require 36 feet. And again, the applicant has indicated these are for vehicles waiting to be serviced or waiting, waiting for parts to come in. These are vehicles that would be relocated and moved inside and outside by employees rather than the general public or customers, and the staff is supportive of that. There is also a five-foot setback deviation, and that is along this north property line. The required setback is 15 feet. In this area right here, the applicant is requesting a 10-foot setback. Again, these stalls are in the same location they are now. Much of this area will be covered by building addition. These stalls will remain in that same location. And again, you'll see here, visibility to this area is limited with the adjacent mini storage nearby. The applicant is able to satisfy their total green space needs. It is just the five-feet reduction they are requesting in that area. The other items for green space are satisfied. Building perimeter green space is satisfied with the proposal. Again, this whole north side and portions of the east side are adjacent to green space. I would like to indicate the site is located within our north design, excuse me, north gateway area, and there are specific design requirements for that. The intent is to keep the parking area visible from the interstate. What you see from 35W, limited, just to two areas of parking. The balance of the storage area, as requested and outlined in the design standard, is in the back. Obviously, with a car dealership, that is difficult because their inventory, our cars that are parked outside, but the applicant's done a nice job of designing this to create curb appeal, keeping the bulk of their inventory on the east end of the site and away from views of the interstate. It is also within our drinking water overlay district. This is a overlay that was put in place by the City Council. The planning commission reviewed it just a few months ago, a few weeks ago. And the intent here is, when we're looking at any change of land use or expansion of existing land use, we want to make sure that operationally, everything is addressed as far as chemicals, use of chemicals, storage, whether it's fuel and oil or car wash chemicals and things like that, that they are kept inside rather than outside and allowed to drain into a stormwater system or anything like that. The applicant has addressed staff's concerns with that and is able to satisfy our requirements. Let me touch on the building design. So again, here's the existing building, the proposed addition. The access points will remain the same, one here and one on this end. Landscaping, again, I noted in the staff report, the trees that would be eliminated or relocated with the building addition would be kept on-site rather than total removal. So again, if we can look at this being the north elevation, so this is what you're seeing, essentially what you're seeing from the mini-storage site, which has limited visibility. Here is the demarcation between the existing building, which is to the right, and the proposed addition, which is to the left. This is the south elevation that you're seeing from 121st Street. And here is the demarcation from the existing to the proposed. We're looking at the same stone, same EPIS color. The applicant has done as much as they can to design the addition so it is consistent with what's out there. Neither the applicant nor staff wanted this to look like an afterthought, and the applicant has done a good job of that. Through the design process, the applicant added some additional windows to help break up that facade. We had discussions of doing it on this end, too. However, there is, this is the location of the car wash, difficult to do it there. However, if the planning commission has concerns, we can certainly discuss that. Staff feels this is a quality design consistent with what we've seen with the architectural guidelines, and staff is supportive of it. Again, the proposed building is much lower, this wing of the building, the service area is much lower than the sales floor and even the tower on this end. So it does, I'm not going to say it's less visible, but it doesn't catch your eye as much as the showroom does that fronts along the frontage road or 35W. I'd like to touch on the parking just for a second. That has been a big discussion with staff and the applicant. There are oftentimes employees, not necessarily from this business, but from other businesses in that area, that are parking on 121st Street. Previously, that was, on-street parking was allowed on both sides. The city has since signed that, so there's only parking on the north side, and that seems to have alleviated some of the issues. But with this expansion, as we've indicated on this plan, the applicant is taking a significant amount of parking lot, significant amount of inventory and employee spaces, and we want to ensure with this expansion, in the event the city would sign this, no parking, the applicant is able to satisfy their needs on-site. Through a number of discussions and realigning some of their internal parking designs, the applicant is able to do that. By ordinance, there's a minimum of 54 stalls needed on-site. That is for, excuse me, that is for customers and employees, and that is with the proposed addition. The applicant is proposing 76 stalls be available for employees and customers. The balance would be for inventory. So we do have those stalls available if anything changes in the future. Pursuant to the ordinance, rooftop, the rooftop equipment will be screened by parapet walls as well as additional screening materials that'll be the same color as the EPIS band. That is how the existing HVAC equipment is handled on-site. Trash and recycling, all materials will be stored inside, consistent with the ordinance. The other item staff worked with the applicant on would be the relocation of the sanitary sewer. Mr. Hillgardner, if you want to just cover that briefly?
Sure. Commissioners, there is an existing sanitary sewer line that runs basically adjacent to the existing building on the east side. It does have an easement in place that the city has. In order to allow this building expansion to happen, we obviously don't want to promote having sewers underneath buildings or structures, so we're required that that sewer would be realigned. It will be realigned along the north side of the property here. There will be a new easement acquired for that sanitary sewer. There'll be a connection made in 121st Street, which again will require a city right-of-way permit for that construction as well. And in addition to that, the old line will be abandoned, and it will be, it will have the easement abandoned as well or vacated, and that will happen at the city council meeting. So they've accommodated all of our concerns with that sanitary sewer line.
Thank you, Mr. Hillgardner.
Mr. Chair, Commissioners, that covers most of the items from staff's standpoint. We are supportive of the application. There are two conditions relating to some of the details of the well-haved protection ordinance and the necessary easement for the revised sewer location. With that, Commissioners, it is a public hearing. The applicant has their design team here. If there are questions that I can't answer, we'll ask the applicant to come up.
Thank you, Mrs. Slenia. Commissioners, any questions for Mrs. Slenia? Commissioner Workman?
Can you go back to the overhead?
The aerial view?
Yeah. I'm sorry, the next one. You just passed. Will there be traffic? I'm looking at the second entry point and then moving right. I'm sorry, the other one.
Right here?
And then moving left to right. Was there, is there going to be a traffic in parallel with the wash? Will cars be able to move through there?
Correct. Mr. Chair, Commissioners, the applicant expects most of the customer traffic will be heading this direction. There are stalls designated in here for customer, both for sales and service. This coming in and moving to the right, the applicant has satisfied the minimum with requirements to get two-way traffic through this area. It's certainly not ideal. It will be a little bit tight. From a customer, or excuse me, from a employee standpoint, most of that traffic will be coming in here and parking in these areas. It's intended that much of this be the main customer entrance, to limit that through traffic as much as possible.
Be some signage there that tells people that that's not where to go?
Staff hasn't seen a signage plan. They did indicate where they allocated those stalls, and we can certainly work with the applicant if that's a concern for the direct traffic.
You? You through?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Levy?
Could you go back to the sewer easement drawing?
Certainly.
Okay, so the easement cuts through underneath what the expansion would be. Where do they propose to run the easement?
The proposed line will, it does come out of the mini-storage site to this point and then run east. Brian, does it?
Correct. It follows the property line.
Okay.
They're going to place manholes, so it'll be a consistent 20-foot easement off of the existing property line. So if you offset that existing property line 20 feet the entire way, that would be what the new easement's going to encompass.
So the sanitary sewer that's in the current easement is for their facility. It doesn't go anywhere else, does it?
No, it actually is. It is a city sewer that serves multiple businesses in that area. That's, if it was just a residential or a private business service, we wouldn't have to go through this process. But because it's a sewer that's serving multiple businesses in that area, we need to carry that through and get it to the sewer in 121st Street. So that's the reason it's being rerouted.
If I can, Mr. Chair, Commissioners, this is unique. It is a public service. It serves, besides Walzer Subaru, it serves one other property, and that is the mini-storage to the north. So it runs from 121st straight through connecting up here. So the applicant will be realigning that, so it does get back out to 121st, but not through the middle of the site.
That was my question. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Levy. Commissioner Benke?
Chris, if you could go back to that just to sort of finish. You sort of stopped, no, I'm sorry, back to the site plan again that we were just talking. You sort of stopped, no, I'm sorry, back to the site plan again that we were just on. You sort of stopped right at that last corner, and then the sanitary then connects out into 121st right there.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we have a 20-foot easement, but we have a 10-foot side yard to the parking. So 10 feet of that easement is under the parking.
Correct.
And obviously, the applicant's aware of that, and aware of what that can mean if that sewer needs to be serviced.
That is correct, Commissioners. We have the same situation right in this area as it exists today.
Sure. Okay. As far as gateway design standards, you know, clearly, we have an existing structure, and they've done arguably an excellent job of tying the new construction into the old, so that's really great to see. I mean, I couldn't see trying to apply any new standards to this building. It already is a fairly good-looking building from 35. I'm struggling, though, with the count of spaces, knowing that the building's going to cover roughly 12,000 square feet, or 30 spaces? 20 spaces?
Sure.
And what that does to product, you know, the product display, knowing that they also are saying that they can take what, you know, they're currently required to have 54 spaces, they're willing to devote 76, I mean, it just seems like they're selling themselves short with vehicles, with both their, the vehicles on display for sale and, you know, and serviceable vehicles.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, I can address that, and obviously, the applicant can address it further. You are absolutely correct. There will be a reduction in the number of new vehicles that are onsite with this proposal. That is not ideal from the applicant's standpoint. That's not their first choice. But the, I believe, the demand, the service demands that they're under, that's a business decision they had to make. Coincidentally, on the same agenda tonight, we do have an application for some off-site inventory storage. Again, I think that was a difficult decision for the applicant to make, as it is, it will be more labor, more time to get those vehicles back and forth, but the constraints of this really deem that necessary. And I'll let the applicant address that, but that will be coming up with the next item.
That was, I was wondering if there was a connection there?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay, I'll leave questions for that one for later. Hardcover on this, you know, clearly, we're under, is the drainage from the building, is that contained, and that goes into the storm sewer?
Correct. The drainage patterns aren't going to be changing. We kind of took a look at roof drains and things like that. The drainage patterns will remain existing the way they are right now.
Existing hardcover.
And ultimately into a regional pond, so we're, no stormwater concerns.
Okay. There's a number of what appear to be monitoring wells onsite. Can you talk about those a little bit?
As far as, I guess, I'm not positive if the monitoring wells are all part of that groundwater monitoring system or not. If there is any wells that need to be abandoned or anything of that nature, they're usually run by permit through the DNR.
Sure, if you could go back to the, any of the site plans or the overhead, I guess that's fine. My recollection is there on either side or between the 121st Street area at, near the west entrance here, and they're on either side, sort of in the boulevard or in the front yard at that location.
And again, those wells are typically, they're monitored by permit through the DNR.
Right.
They're usually within the city right-of-way, and we allow them to be there by permit.
Right.
If, usually, that's a separate issue to what is developed here. If they were going to, if the DNR wanted to look at different locations, they would come in, reapply for a permit, at which time they would be required to abandon this existing wellhead.
I mean, if they're monitoring wells, does that come under the wellhead protection?
Not necessarily. Those have been there, I believe, since initial construction. They're, they're, they have been, they have been in place prior to previous usage and concerns that were on the site before the existing facility took over, before Walzer was part of the application.
Is this related to the freeway landfill to the north?
That, correct. That and other uses in the area.
Okay. Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, Commissioner Benke. Any other questions for Commissioner, for Mr. Slenia? Commissioner Levy?
I have one more.
Go ahead.
You talked about the internal hazardous waste, oil, solvents, and so forth, being contained inside the property. We always hear about spills coming outside the property from time to time. Is that by, is it permitted? Is it required permit, the type of storage? Or is it a condition that we put on the application that, I don't know how that works?
It is permitted, Mr. Chair Commissioners. It's permitted, and much of it runs through the state. The city's fire department has some restrictions and storage classifications, but much of their operation, much of their hazardous waste material runs through state permits.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Slenia. This application requires a public hearing. I now open the public hearing. Anyone from the audience who desires to come up and address the commission, please do so now. Please mention your name and address for the record, sir.
Yeah, my name is John Burry, and the address is 201 West 121st Street. I operate the business at the end of the street here.
Welcome.
Thank you. I have a few pictures. Could I pass these around?
Sure.
Okay.
Well, if you can just pass the pictures again, sure, if you can, now you can.
Yeah, I've got a couple of concerns here, and it has to do with the parking on the street. I find that to be a real hazard. I go up and down that street probably at least three, four times a day, and you always have to be concerned with somebody from one of the dealerships, people either going out there for lunch, going for a break, whatever, and obviously, the driver's door opens into the traffic. And since we have cars on the one side, and we have big vehicles going up and down, that if you notice the street, it has a dog leg in it, which means a person who looks in the rearview mirror to think, oh, I'm fine, I don't see anything coming, opens that door, may all of a sudden find a vehicle right there. And we have, and to my knowledge, had an issue, but I have talked to the city about it, and because I go up and down there all the time, that it will be an issue, and it's just a matter of when it happens. The city has a stake in this. They have a parcel adjacent to ours with big trucks going up and down there and different-sized city vehicles. So it's just not me that's saying, hey, I think there's something to look at here. If you look at the pictures there, it shows the Walzer Subaru truck loaded with cars coming through our parcel to be turned around. The other pictures show the cars being unloaded in a no-parking area, also narrowing up that street for potential problems, whether it be the driver getting off from unloading the car, stepping into the traffic, or, you know, obviously, two cars cannot pass there at that point. And, you know, to my knowledge, the times I've talked to them, it doesn't seem like it seems to be addressed that there is an issue there. And also, the cars, when they're being, the maintenance done on them, whatever, normally come down to our end of the street and twist around, trying to figure out what's wrong with the cars, and whether the technician has to get out to try and analyze what's going on. You know, obviously, for our customers, that's an inconvenience to them when they come down and want to do the analysis of the car in our area. And it's no parking on both sides. The street narrows once it gets down to our facility, which makes it worse. And so that's my, you know, when you're talking about expansion, all I see is more congestion on my end of the street, and I don't see any, anything addressed here, how the cars, where they're going to be unloaded, and other than on the no-parking side of the street. But like I say, my main concern has to do with the fact that when you have the cars parked all along there, right up to their driveway, when a car comes pulling out from their main entrance, they have, you know, they don't have the visibility I think they need to be able to pull out without somebody, all of a sudden, vehicles there, and they're like, whoa, where did he come from? So like I say, I think there's something that really has to be addressed here before there is a problem. So I think that those are concerns I have, and also, the speed going up the street from our end, you know, normally, they're accelerating up, whether that be a test drive or if that just be somebody trying the car out. On the weekends, on a Saturday, when I go to check our facility, I've had a woman that was backing up by our gate, and I have had the gate closed, and I was checking the equipment and checking, walking the yard, and when I walked up to her, I said, can I help you? And she says, I'm just backing up to your gate because the visibility is supposed to be really good here. I want to see how close I get without hitting your gate. And it's like, well, I'd really appreciate it if you won't hit my gate, because it's expensive to fix, and I know because it's been hit before. So these are, you know, concerns that I have, is the speed getting the cars. If you go down that street like I do on a weekend to check our facility, and there's no cars parked there, it's actually a pleasant, both sides are landscaped, really nice. They, both dealerships, I think, do an excellent job keeping their facilities up, and I'm, I question why they would put all those cars along there, so when people are driving up and down there, they can't even see the inventory they have, because they have to look through the cars that are parked out in the street. And I know, obviously, that site, because of the size, they're doing what they can, but I think there's issues there with the parking that really concern me. And with the expansion and more cars, and more cars coming and going, that means more congestion on the street as they're being unloaded, unless, you know, I don't know where it shows in here where the cars are supposed to be unloaded, unless they go to a different site to unload them.
Thank you, sir.
So.
Before you leave, Commissioners, you have any questions for the gentleman? He has raised several issues. Commissioner Benke?
I presume that, well, I know that you've been there long enough, you were there long enough, that you've been there since before the no-parking on the one side was...
Yeah, we didn't have any problems. There was no, you know, before the dealerships started parking there. You know, they're the ones that brought the parking into the street. And so when you say, you know, where, you know, what's prompted this, it's prompted by the fact that, you know, it's been a very successful dealership, I've been told that, and that's why they end up, they need the inventory, so they put the employees out onto the street.
Sure.
And like they brought up, there are possibly other cars being parked there. I don't dispute that.
Right.
But like I say, I think there is a definite concern that before this expansion takes, that, you know, it's addressed. If we could possibly take the cars off the street, you know, talk to them about the people coming down and using our facility to turn around and things like that, that would be great.
Sure. If I may, this is a public street all the way to Burry's Gate?
Correct.
And width-wise, compared to other commercial areas?
Well, east of the intersection, I can't remember what the name of that road is that intersects.
Pleasant.
Pleasant. East of that, I mean, it's narrower, it still meets city standards, especially for the way streets have gone with more of the movement to remove impervious. It definitely meets city standards.
Sure.
Again, I think some of the, some of the concerns were attempted to be addressed with the restriction of parking on one side. Not that it couldn't be evaluated, again, to look at both sides. We'd have to involve, obviously, Ryan Peterson, city engineer, and likely Steve Albrecht at that.
And then, I know that at corners, we typically look for sightlines and other things. Would we be also incorporating that at driveway entrances and things?
We'd like to evaluate basically sight triangles. If there is a concern raised, we don't necessarily sign for intersections or driveway intersections for that with no parking. If there is a concern raised where we think it is a visibility problem that needs to be addressed, or it could be dangerous, then we would go ahead and look at, you know, actually, you know, signing no parking in certain areas. But typically, we won't do that until there's a problem.
Sure, no parking here at the corner, here at the driveway.
Correct.
Okay. If I may, Chris, is, since that is a no-parking area, does the loading and unloading, I mean, typically, that should fall under parking?
Correct. If I can, go ahead, Mr. Chair Commissioners, I can address some of these.
Good.
The existing site, as well as the proposed site, are designed to handle the vehicle transports onsite. Whether the manager chooses to do that or not, that is their decision, but it is against ordinance, and in a no-parking situation like these pictures dictate, the transport can be ticketed, it can be cited for that violation. Again, we have designed it, we have worked with the applicant to make sure that can be handled onsite. So no-parking area applies to a semi-unloading as well as an employee car there.
Before you move on, and then, Mr. Burry, your site is labeled private property?
Yes, it's posted.
Okay.
Yes.
Also, as Brian indicated, it is a city street. We have jurisdiction over what can be parking and not parking. There's no notification or contacting adjacent property owners. If the city deems it to be an issue, we can take both sides, no parking, which is, you know, why we brought that up with the applicant to ensure if this moves along, Mr. Burry, your property and your vehicles and so forth, getting through there, it's a concern for you as well as for the city and everyone.
Well, when an accident happens, it's going to be bad, and I don't know if any of you have ever seen bad accidents, but it's, you know, it's not good. My sister's a flight nurse, and I've been on 169, once there and once on Highway 10, where she had to pull over. And to me, I can't handle any of that, but when somebody's saying you have to come with me to help, and you see something like that, all you need to do is see it once, and that's enough. I like to bring up the fact that I don't have a, I like their dealership, they've done a good job. When my son was looking for a new Subaru, I had him go down there, and he did buy one there. I have a Dodge truck, I have it serviced at the Dodge of Burnsville down there. So I like to try and work with the neighbors. When the Dodge dealer years back was doing some maintenance work on his parking lot, I, he asked if he could park his, some of the inventory in our yard for a couple days, if that'd be an issue, and I said that was fine. So I want to work with the neighbors. I don't have any ill feelings towards either one of them. I just want to get along, and if I see a problem, then hopefully, they'll recognize that before there is a real problem.
We appreciate your concern. I mean, you have raised some issues that, what Mr. Slenia is saying, you know, some of these, they can be ticketed, and you are concerned because you do not want an accident. Nobody wants an accident.
Right, and I don't want anybody ticketed. These are good, hard-working people. All they want to do is do their job and go home. They don't want to have to go to the police department and try to figure out, how do I handle this ticket?
That's why we appreciate your concerns. We have a representative from the applicant here, and we will ask, we'll call that person up so they can respond to your concerns.
Right.
We want to avoid any kind of problems in the future, and I agree with you.
Right. Yeah, and the last thing I'd like to bring up to the city is there is a pedestrian crosswalk. Now, it's pretty much dolled out, it needs to be redone at some, you know, sooner than later. There are cars that park across that, and like I say, I guess, I, you know, I just soon not call the police department unless somebody that's just trying to come to work and do his job. And maybe it was the last one there, wasn't a spot for him, so hopefully, I can get through today without being ticketed.
The pedestrian crosswalk, I know this, Mr. Slenia, you're making a notation, and I'm sure you... You're making a notation and I'm sure you'll address that.
Am I able to keep these pictures? Oh, absolutely. And, and obviously the crosswalk has nothing to do with the dealership, so I'm not.
Certainly.
You know, that's just a side note that I think would be nice if, if, obviously I think if it was peen it readily so a person could see it, I don't think anybody would park through it at that point.
Yeah, I agree with you.
So.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Berry. We appreciate your, your comments and your contribution. The representative from the applicant, would you please come up, sir, and just mention your name and address for your records?
Good evening. My name is David Phillips. I'm the architect for Walzer Automotive Group, which is the user of this property. Uh, the applicant goes through Assafur, who is the property owner.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Welcome.
Oh, my, my address is 227 Colfax Avenue North in Minneapolis 55405.
You have listened to the concerns raised by Mr. Berry. Um, can you just respond to some of the issues he has raised?
Surely. Um, first of all, um, there is parking, as noted on the aerial, you'll see parking along here. Uh, I am sure some of those would be Walzer employees, some of them may be the Dodge dealers' employees, and some of them just may be cars that we don't know. Uh, we have discussed this with the city and again, it, while we're not asking that the parking be removed, it's entirely up to the city whether you have parking on both sides or not. Uh, they've already removed it on one side. Um, but we would, uh, we would defer to the, uh, city staff if they feel the need for that. I'd point out that we built this, uh, building, I think it was 08 when you opened, and, and to our knowledge, there's never been an accident based on parking on that street, uh, since we've been there. Um, the, uh, with respect to the transports, um, the, the general managers don't direct the transports onto the street. Sometimes you get a transport driver that, that will stop on the street or they, they get turned in such a way that they want to unload. Uh, we would discourage that and ask them to move. Uh, but the next application that you're going to address at this meeting will discuss how we can unload transports and you'll see that on the plan that I'll present here at the next application. In general, um, virtually all of the transports, most of the transports will not be stopping at this site, but we'd be stopping at the new site and you'll see that graphically on the plan that I'm presenting. That, that doesn't mean that, that you may have, uh, some cars that, that for whatever reason get dropped off here. Maybe it's only two that are on a transport with eight vehicles. Uh, but in general, we don't intend to have transports here. Um, with respect to the parking overall, the next application you'll see addresses our needs. We would rather have more land here and we'd build a bigger building and have more parking. We have a loyal customer base and we want to thank our neighbor for buying a car. Um, those cars need to be serviced. Subaru's a very good brand. Uh, we want to provide for servicing the cars. We're going to go from approximately seven, uh, service based 18, so we'll more than double our service capability. Um, the, uh, car wash from right now, it's a drive-in, back-out car wash, so it's very slow. Um, uh, this will be operated by employees as indicated, but it's a pull-through like we have at the Honda store, the new Honda store, so we get a much higher throughput. And, uh, you really won't have people waiting and taking up parking spaces. Uh, our service will be able to run out, run it through the wash without waiting and deliver the car. Um, in terms of, I, I don't know if I've answered, addressed all the questions. In terms of the, uh, uh, driving, uh, it is a cul-de-sac as you go, uh, down there. So I, and I, I can't, I have not personally observed speeds, but, but you end up with a cul-de-sac for a turnaround to come back to the dealership. Um, it'd be a short drive at best, but if, uh, I, I, we certainly, uh, don't have, we can't prohibit a customer from wanting to drive down a, a city street even if they turn around on their, um, the, uh, uh, I don't know if there, what other, I think that.
What I will ask, uh, Mr. Phillips, that you bring some of the concerns that Mr. Berry raised with the management and, you know.
We have, I have, uh, two representatives, uh, from Walzer here, Don Schilling and Paul Meyer, uh, work on their facilities. And I assure you, the comments from tonight, we'll get back to the upper management, which will get back to the store management.
Thank you. Thank you so much. I think Mr. Berry raised some concerns. He doesn't want to see an accident. He doesn't want to see problems and he's a good neighbor, uh, and.
And he's a customer.
Yes. I think we're all on the same page.
But Walzer, Walzer, to the extent they can, wants to be a good citizen in every city that they're, uh, enjoy having business. We have four businesses in Burnsville, so.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Any, commissioners, any questions for Mr. Phillips?
Just.
Commissioner Benke?
Can you elaborate again on the disparity between the, the parking need for employees and the parking being asked for for employees?
The parking for employees meets the theoretical parking. Our, our largest, it's surprising, even in the after, our largest employee day will be when most of the salespeople are there on Saturday and the service people are generally not there on Saturday. Um, uh, there'd be less service vehicles on the lot on Saturday, so we, we're constantly, on site to size, we're constantly managing the spots one way or the other. During the week, we would have more service vehicles. During the weekend, we would have very few service vehicles, few that stay over, but we'd have more employees parking for the salespeople that come. Um, and, and again, that's why we've looked for a, a longer-term off-site solution for parking that's close enough that we can bring new inventory back here. The real issue is we will have very little new inventory that's not in the showroom here and, and the used cars, uh, will be limited to what we have. Um, as far as, as far as, uh, um, again, we, we have to work with what we have. It's been very successful. If, if you, if you come into Burnsville, I smile every time I see that building on the hill. I, I like, I like the building, I think it presents well, we'll continue the materials that are there, so.
Well, I guess sort of I was asking about is that there was a, I think it was a stated need for 54 spaces, but you were going to provide 76?
We provided up to 76 to show what it is. We will, we'll expand that as needed from 54, but we'll, uh, we'll use what we, what we have.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. We appreciate your, uh, explanation and your, your commitment to bring to the attention of staff, uh, the issues raised by Mr. Berry.
We'll, we'll do that and I'm sure I'll see you again twice more tonight.
Good. Thank you. And keep smiling. Okay, we are still, uh, in the public hearing. Any other person would like to come up and address the commission on this application? Okay, seeing none, going once, twice, I now close the public hearing. Commissioners, over to you.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Commissioner Benke?
I, I really think that, um, Walzer appears to be doing a really good job from the building standpoint. Um, I think the traffic needs to be looked at a little bit. Um, the point that Commissioner Ruckman brought up about the narrowness of that road does seem to make it very difficult for the parking lot to be used for loading, unloading. However, as noted, there appears to be a second application coming that's going to address that a little better anyway. Um, I, I do think that staff probably needs to look a little bit at, uh, the sightlines and things along there. Um, I think perhaps massaging the no parking areas is in order and, uh, otherwise I thought it was a pretty good application.
I tend to agree with you, Commissioner Benke, and I'm sure, um, Mr. Slenya has taken notes of that.
I agree.
Uh, we have a very, um, good staff and I'm sure they'll be looking into it, so.
Thanks.
Do I hear a motion now?
Motion.
I will then. I'll get to it here real quick. And it is, there. Uh, oops, wrong one. That's the next one, that's the next one.
Go ahead.
Very good. Uh, let me come back to that.
Yeah, there's a.
There it is. Thank you, Chris. Um, I would recommend the planning commission, recommend the city council, I would move the planning commission, recommend the city council approval of the planned unit development amendment for the building addition and remodeling to the existing Walzer Subaru facility at 600 121st Street with the following two staff conditions.
Motion.
And, yes.
Motion by Commissioner Benke, seconded by Commissioner Ruckman. All in favor?
Aye.
Pass on a four, zero vote. Uh, again, this will be, uh, it'll go to the city council at the regular meeting on August 3rd. Uh, Mr. Berry, thank you for coming and for your comments. Mr. Phillips, I know you'll see you later. Moving on the agenda, item number six, another public hearing from the Assafur Family LTD Partnership for an IUP amendment to allow an open storage lot for vehicle inventory at a vacant property located at Lot 8, Block 1, Burnsville Industrial Park. And we have our very good intern here and he will be presenting this application.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. So we are looking at, um, uh, an IUP amendment to allow for an open storage lot for overflow vehicles. Um, this is, uh, located in, um, in the GIM district, um, which is within the Minnesota River quadrant, uh, just to the northwest of the 35W, uh, Highway 13 interchange on Ladybird Lane. Um, the proposal consists of paved parking, um, again, for, uh, inventory storage, um, at what is currently a vacant property. Uh, the history of the site, uh, it's, uh, remained vacant except for a billboard, uh, which was approved by the city council under conditional use permit in 1991. Um, no changes are being proposed to this billboard and the interim use permit is set Uh, currently, um, in terms of the interim use permit details, uh, the intention, aside from providing overflow storage parking, um, it will improve the aesthetics of the site with landscaping and screening along the perimeter. Uh, it will enhance the area, which may promote, uh, future development within the Gateway District, which is an objective, uh, and goal within the comprehensive plan. The site, um, consists of, is approximately 280, 83 acres, um, and the proposal would have 67% impervious surface coverage, uh, within an overlay district and, uh, special district, uh, for both drinking water and, uh, the MRQ. Uh, the parking and, excuse me, parking and loading, uh, will be provided for Walzer's inventory, uh, not for general use, um, for the general public or employees, but simply for inventory. There's 278 proposed parking stalls for storage and, uh, one of the, uh, drive aisles, which is, um, illustrated here with a, um, with one of the, um, delivery trucks, I suppose, has been widened to 30 feet as opposed to the standard 24 feet in order to accommodate Uh, some of the landscape provisions, uh, um, will include, uh, 33% green space, which is, uh, in excess of what's required within the district, um, for this particular use, um, open storage lot. Um, additionally, uh, there will be a mixture of ornamental trees, uh, along the periphery, uh, where the, the screening fence, um, will also be placed. Um, because of a significant grade change, uh, from 35W to the site, uh, most of the sightlines will bypass the lot itself, um, although there'll still be screening, um, in order to, to prevent, um, the sight of the vehicles. Um, there is an additional revision, um, that, uh, staff is requesting. As you can see, there's, uh, a few trees, three, um, in the northeast corner of the parcel. And it's being suggested that those trees be moved to just northwest of the billboard, uh, um, which is in this vicinity. Uh, apparently sightlines are, um, more accessible to the lot from that angle. Uh, so that's, uh, one amendment that the, uh, staff is, uh, recommending. Uh, the, uh, the screening itself, uh, will be an eight-foot-tall black vinyl chain link fence, which, um, surrounds the perimeter. Lighting consists of LED, um, uh, mounted lights, uh, on 32-foot, uh, on poles. Um, so the location will be appropriately lit. Engineering considerations, um, uh, take account for stormwater and, um, and any stormwater onsite will ultimately drain into the regional stormwater pond. Uh, having said that, um, staff recommends the planning, uh, the planning commission recommended the city council approval of the IUP amendment, uh, with the following condition, uh, that the interim use permit amendment issued pursuant to state law and city code, allowing outdoor storage on the subject shall terminate as of January 1st, 2027. And that there is additional, um, landscaping, uh, placed to the northwest portion of the billboard on the site. And I will turn it back to you, the, to commissioners, uh, with any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Appreciate, uh, your presentation. Commissioners, questions? Commissioner Benke?
Um, Mr. Williams, um, the, the report talks about remediation. Um, so this lot has already been remediated, it's already had the peat and the bed soils removed from it?
That's correct. Yes, that was, um, part of the initial, um, interim use permit, uh, that was issued and the amendment is now to develop on top of that.
Right. Um, can you go to the pictometry for a minute, please? Um, having driving, driven by today, this is clearly an old photo. Um, obviously the parcel to the west is heavily involved in, in remediation right now. There, this shows a number of, um, a lot of stuff being stored on this lot, um, back, back to this Walzer storage lot. Um, to the south there, um, basically abutting the. To the south there, basically abutting the property to the south, there's a number of areas that appear to show, you know, debris or other materials that we've addressed with the, that parcel's application for the IUP amendment, Chris, right? So basically, this is, I'm just assuming this is a relatively old photograph?
That's a proposition.
Mr. Chair Commissioners, correct. This is a dated photo. What you're seeing in this area was actually encroachment from the adjacent property owner. That is a, both a separate issue, the city is dealing with that adjacent property owner to the south, as well as the applicant, the property owner for this, is also dealing with that encroachment with the neighbor.
There also appears to be a pretty significant berm built out of debris, for lack of a better term.
Correct.
Is that on this property or on the adjacent property?
It encroaches onto this property, it is not, well, by default, it's the property owner's berm, but it was not placed there by the property owner.
So, the resolution of all that with this construction is in process, essentially?
Correct.
Okay. And I guess I did see an answer here to the next question. You did say originally a Walser lot, but this is strictly for the use of Walser Subaru, not any of the other Walser dealerships, or is that an open?
Staff has not gotten that specific with the applicant. That was some early discussions. From our standpoint, as long as it is kept up, as long as they are new vehicles, as long as the operation works, we were not going to specifically condition it by the brand.
The reason I was bringing it up was some of the discussion that City Council had regarding this particular use of vacant property in the IUP. It is new vehicles, not used vehicles, not vehicles to be serviced. It's strictly new vehicle storage, inventory storage, in the process of being moved over to the lot to be sold.
That is correct. Mr. Chair Commissioners, again, staff did not add those specific disclaimers to it. That may be something the Planning Commission would like to add or suggest to the council from a staff standpoint. We know it won't be accessible to the public based on the security fencing and based on discussions with the applicant. It's their full intent that these are brand-new inventory vehicles.
With the new ordinance amendment that's, that Council discussed, they haven't approved that yet, right? They haven't adopted it yet?
They have not. That was initial discussions. Cedric, you want to touch on that?
That's right. That's something under consideration right now, which staff is considering the best approach to, but whether, are you referring to the off-site storage ordinance that would allow vehicle storage at sites across town?
Right. Essentially, this proposal is coming in advance of a potential ordinance. With that thought in mind and knowing that it's under discussion, I think that there are some points that are being made for that, that I think we should be looking at here.
I was just going to say, this is a slightly different animal in that potential ordinance or what staff's going to pursue. Also, the Planning Commission will see it as it moves forward. That would only be an accessory use, so it would need a principal structure on it. It would need to be, it would need to be in a parking lot that's overparked or that's underutilized, that has a building that has a current operation, and that's why we're addressing this separately.
Okay.
Without a building, it's a different animal.
Sure. And then, it's actually in the MRQ, and it provides a use to a vacant parcel. I think you pointed out that it will improve the aesthetics of the area somewhat, from a vacant lot to a parking lot, but nonetheless. I think the report also talked about double and triple-deep storage. I think the site plan, I think if you go to the site plan now, I think it looks like it's exclusively double-deep, right?
Along the perimeter, it is. It's, in terms of stacking the vehicles, otherwise, it's standard stalls throughout the center with islands on either end.
Okay. My next question, the screening fence, I mean, I drove that today, drove along Lady Bird, took a look in, obviously. My way out, I went out Cliff Road and drove up 35, and 35 is so much higher that, with my vehicle anyway, I basically see the whole parking lot. So, I mean, I don't think there's any, I don't think screening anything along the freeway here is really going to do a heck of a lot for us. But, you know, you've got an eight-foot fence that does a pretty good job on Lady Bird and some of the other areas. I guess I'm confused about what the diamond mesh fence that's attached to the chain link fence, what that actually does.
Makes it, it makes it opaque to a degree, although the ability for it to fully screen the site is questionable, but it does add an aesthetic appeal given alternatives.
And then, it being a fence for the property, this expanded mesh is on the outside, and it benefits the neighbors essentially, which is sort of a standard way of building a fence with the good side out? Or is it on the inside?
It's on the exterior of the fence, although I presume you might want to speak to this, that it's also visible from the interior of the fence.
Correct. The specific reasoning for the mesh is, within the ordinance, even by interim use permit, storage lot needs to be fully screened 100% up to six feet in height. So, to your point, we're not, we're not able to screen anything very well from the interstate, but we are, you know, we're hoping the site develops, or we're hoping other properties in the area develop. This is technically a storage site rather than a sales site that we just talked about. So, the, so the mesh really does two things. It helps satisfy that opaque quality. It also, well, I guess, yeah, it simply satisfies that opaque quality without dealing with a solid PVC or privacy fence or something.
Would you go to the image of the mesh? And I know this is.
Oh, I apologize.
Okay.
I didn't include it, but it is in your package.
Yeah, I did see it here, although this is the unpainted version, I assume.
I can touch on that. The mesh is a similar material we've used. Staff has recommended it at Menards. The Walmart Garden Center has it. The new Tri-State Bobcat location has it. It is, it does provide a very industrial feel, but it's also a little higher quality than a screen, than a black mesh screen.
Okay. And then, there was a note to try and move the trees to the billboard area. Does Clear Channel know that? Would that be wise, knowing what they do to maintain those?
That was something, again, brought up at a staff level. Although not required, we're hoping that these, some or all of these trees are there long-term.
Sure.
There may be redevelopment within the site, but it's our intent that, over time, these can grow and mature. There's concern that possibly this one or some of these may create visibility issues for that billboard.
Sure, even there, sure.
So, our, or our recommendation was simply take a little more time with the applicant and reconfigure some or all of these to satisfy both future visibility for the billboard and, over time, some buffer to the interstate.
And then, probably my last question, IUP? This one, it has a sunset of 2027, and there's nothing prior to that, there's no other use, there's no other thing that might make a sunset prior to that date, then?
Not based off the current proposal. At this point, the property owner has, has until 2027 to correct all the soils and has that time to store soils, use it as prep, use it for the other remediation they're working on. So, staff feels this is an immediate benefit and basically use the balance of that IUP for this use. If it develops, redevelop sooner, that's a benefit to everybody.
And I was wrong, brought up. Brian?
Yeah. Fortunately, the city was doing their thinking ahead of time in this MRQ area and provided a large regional basin, so all of the storm sewer that was previously installed, as well as the stormwater ponding system, was designed for all of these areas to ultimately develop. So, there, everything generally flows from southeast to northwest, will be captured by storm sewer inlets and put into a storm sewer pipe that'll be treated at the regional pond.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Benke. Any other comment, Mr. Williams? Questions? Commissioner Levy?
I've seen in the old Knox lumber site, new cars being stored. I don't know whose brand they were, but from time to time, there's been cars stored there. Multiple cars stored in the Burnsville Center parking lot. How does our discussion here impact those sites, or have those even come here for discussion?
Mr. Chair Commissioners, really, there's two responses on that. One is, this, this inventory lot will provide Walser as a group a little more flexibility on how they're handling those, their inventory. I can't speak that any of those are specifically Walser vehicles on those sites. Currently, by ordinance, those locations are illegal, they're not permitted. Staff is pursuing enforcement on that, but getting to the bigger issue, or a future issue that Mr. Williams was working on, staff and the council are working on some ideas that would allow that off-site storage for a limited amount of time through a permit, again, as long as there's a principal structure there, as long as other vehicles are there on a regular basis, rather than basically spending our efforts with enforcement chasing those uses around town, we're looking at other options.
So, this being purely storage, no structure, is a different animal than what these others are?
Correct.
Okay.
Any other questions to Mr. Williams? Thank you so much, Mr. Williams. Appreciate it. This application requires a public hearing. I now open the public hearing. Anyone from the audience who desires to come up and address the commission on this matter, feel free to do so. Please mention your name and address for the record.
Good evening again.
Good evening, Mr. Williams.
David Phillips, again, 227 Colfax Avenue in Minneapolis. Just a couple of very brief comments here. One is, as you saw on the site plan before this one, we show a transport, how do I do that?
Just the arrow key on the keyboard should get you.
Uh-huh. There we go.
There you go.
I'm a computer expert now. You'll see here, this site was specifically designed with wider aisles and a second entrance, so we'll be able to bring a transport truck, go through the gate, have a wider aisle to unload, and then still exit without backing up. So, it's a one-way, and actually, the truck could probably go either way, but it's no backing on this site, and it's designed to handle unloading. It would be our expectation that most of the unloading for the Subaru site occurs here. I want to briefly just address two other related issues. One is, because there might be a transport for Walser that has eight to 10 vehicles, depending on size on it, and they might have Toyotas with Subarus, or they might have other brands. So, there would be times that we will have other brands here. It's intended primarily as Subaru, but the transport might bring different brands. We have, again, four franchises in Burnsville. This is not the most convenient site for our other three franchises up on, south of the shopping center. The second issue is, and it goes back to the discussion of the first, I expect that there are times that there is some used inventory here, not for display to customer, but just because it's prepped and ready. And if we have 40 vehicles on the other side and 60 total in inventory, we would store part of them here. If they were, if somebody wanted to look at them, an employee would come over and get it and bring it back to the site. So, I don't want to preclude the concept that they'll never be used here. We think some, it's primarily will be new, but there would, but it's not intended as a service lot, for instance. It's not intended, there'll be no activity, per se, on this lot. Nobody's going to be detailing cars here. Nobody's going to be, it's a secure lot. We actually like the concept of an eight-foot security fence, although some of the grades, especially to the southeast of that lot, probably eliminate the need for a security fence up on the hill there. And we would welcome the chance to look at that and make a, it's a very expensive fence, and if we could eliminate some of it because there's no benefit to the city or Walser, we would certainly welcome that flexibility to work with your staff on this. We've spent a lot of time on both these projects with the staff, and we certainly appreciate the professional way they go about it, both your engineering and planning, and we've discussed a lot of these issues. As far as the billboard, we'd certainly look at, it's not our intent to block it. We don't want to be, get letters from Clear Channel. As far as planning on the billboard easement, I just don't think that I'm permitted to based on the easement. So, we'll look at that. The last thing I wanted to talk about very briefly is the lighting. We've come full circle, and again, this is not a display lot, so we don't think it needs to be lit, per se, at night. We'd like to reduce the lighting to two poles where the transports come in that are on motion sensors, so if somebody were on the lot, they'll set off a motion sensor, and Walser or your police department will question why there's a light on in that lot, something, there'd be some activity after dark on that lot. So, again, we'd like that flexibility to work with the staff on lighting. What we don't want to do is have lighting here that would encourage people to go in this otherwise unmonitored lot and vandalize the cars or steel wheels or whatever. So, we want security, and we don't want to make it convenient for them. So, we would, we would ask, again, for some minor flexibility on lighting to work with staff. Other than that, we think this helps address the needs of Walser. We have other inventory lots in the south of the center there for some of the other projects. Again, Walser's committed to Burnsville. We like being here, and our businesses, you have a great business climate, and it's a good place to do business here, so.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Appreciate you. Comments? We still have a public hearing. Is it still open? Anyone else who would like to come up and address the commission? Seeing none, we now close the public hearing. Commissioners?
I guess I had a couple of questions for the applicant from what he just said.
You would like Mr. Phillips to come up?
Please, yes.
Mr. Phillips, would you please come back to the podium?
So, I guess. Commissioner Benke? Thank you. To touch on the last two things you talked about, lighting two poles, auto sensors, I like the auto sensor idea clearly because you're not adding light pollution and things like that. I'm struggling a little bit how two lamps at the entrances on sensors would draw your attention to the property if somebody was there and shouldn't be versus having the whole lot lit up in the same situation and what that probably lot lit up in the same situation and what that probably does to somebody who is not, perhaps not a professional. Let's just say that if we're talking vandalism and things like that, that in terms of scaring them away.
We, they would be internal, more on those turnaround islands for the, is where I envision them. And that's why we'd like to to have the flexibility to work with your staff. Obviously, your police department has has a oar in this water, they want, they want to know what's going on, and we don't want to overlight it, though. We don't, we don't see, we don't see it as a lot that when you drive down the freeway, you see lights.
Agreed, agreed, I think. I was trying to get a better handle on what where you were going from a security standpoint. Were you planning on monitoring it as well, CCTV and some of that kind of stuff?
We would, it's very likely if on the poles that we'd have some cameras, we do at the other stores. And and again, we have a lighting plan, we submitted with a few lights, and we just want the flexibility to work with your staff and police department to get it right for every, all players there.
The other thing was the fence, you know, talking about that southeast corner, and, you know, while the freeway certainly has a significant grade there, you know, I think it's pretty clear that at some point on that hill, a fence does provide some screening.
Yeah.
And I just think that, given the requirement of the ordinance for screening, that that should be attempted.
And we're fine if, we've shown it all the way around, and we would, we would continue it that way.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Any other questions, Brian? Okay, thank you, Mr. Phillips, appreciate it. Okay, any other questions, comments, commissioners? Do I hear a motion?
I got it here.
Oh, there's a second.
There is, okay, thank you.
The public hearing, please.
Yes.
Oh, okay. I would move.
Oh, I have Commissioner Benke.
Thank you. I would move that the Planning Commission recommend of the City Council approval of the IUP to allow an open storage lot at Lot 8, Block 1, Burnsville Industrial Park, with the following two conditions. One, that the interim use permit amendment issued pursuant to state law and city code allowing outdoor storage on this site shall terminate on January 1, 2027. Number two, that the applicant shall work with staff to revise landscaping in the northwest corner with additional overstoryed trees, and I think I will leave the lighting issue to staff.
I was going to mention, Mr. Chair, we can certainly work with the applicant on on the lighting.
Thank you. Motion moved by Commissioner Benke?
Actually, before we vote on this, I do have one question.
Don't we need a second first?
No, let's get a second, we can, we can have discussions.
Sure, sure.
Second by Commissioner Levy. Discussion?
Thank you. What do they plan on doing in 12 years? Mr. Phillips, if you may?
That is a great question, and and the honest answer today is, we have the next eight to eight, nine years to to work on a a permanent solution. That might be a whole new site for Subaru, for instance.
Honestly, we'd love to keep you in Burnsville, but I needed to ask.
Yeah, no, we, we don't, the the difficulty with our Subaru site is, nobody can drive by in this, you know, the, if you're coming from the south, you don't, no offense to our Dodge neighbors, but you don't see Dodge, and and that small building there actually looks bigger than Dodge, and we really like that site. We talked about moving it south of the of the property, but but we would lose a lot of the traffic from Bloomington, and and it, but but it's a great question, and and we're going to work hard over the next eight, nine years to have a, have figured out a solution before the 12-year clock ticks.
Yeah, we want to keep you in Burnsville, so we'd like to stay.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other discussion?
Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, those in favor of the motion, you say aye?
Aye.
Pass on a 4-0 vote. This matter will also go to the City Council regular meeting on August 3. Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Appreciate your being here. Okay, move on the agenda. Item number seven, public hearing, application from Janet Zawinski for a lot with variance to allow for the creation of two lots that are less than the minimum 75-foot lot with, lot width, standard at address 990 Pershing Circle. Ms. So, yeah? Ms. Garris?
We have the technical expert to change here. Commissioners and members of the audience, this is a variance application, and unlike the other applications we've heard tonight, actually, a variance does not have a public hearing. There is a different review procedure and notification procedure that's associated with variances as opposed to the PUD amendments, the interim use permits, conditional use permits. Saying that, just because it's not, you know, technically a public hearing by statute, doesn't mean that we don't take input from the public. The notification area is not required, we're not required to send them out to people within 350 feet. There is a policy that you send them out to the adjacent property owners. In this case, we did send them out to people within 350 feet, but I just wanted to let the the commissioners know that. With a variance, the applicant is looking for a variance from the minimum lot with standard of 75 feet, and if the variance is approved, the applicant would be able to make application to subdivide the property that they currently have, which is three lots of record, they would be able to divide that into two lots for building purposes. The property is located at 990 Pershing Circle. There was a cabin that was on the site up until 2014, that has been removed. The property is owned in common, meaning the property, all three lots have been owned by the same family for a number of generations, actually, and the family actually owned additional property within this area over the years and has sold it off, so they have the the three lots remaining. On the photograph about where this pink dot is, is where the former cabin used to be. I do not believe it was hooked up to city utilities. The situation is, is in the plat of the property, which dates back to the 1920s, when this neighborhood was platted, very similar to lots of old plats, nobody intended or thought that lakes would be developed with the type of homes that we see today. These plats were done basically anticipating small cabins, and people from the Twin Cities and elsewhere used to come out to these areas, Prior Lake, other lakes, and come out for the weekends, and there were lots of resorts in various communities. Needless to say, since that, since the plat, a number of things have changed, and when we're dealing with property subdivision, which is what the applicant would like to do, they would like to subdivide their land holdings into two lots, you're always subject to meeting the current requirements at the time of the subdivision. What the plat shows are measurements that are basically at the water line that they showed at that time in this location, that these are 50-foot lots, and then also along the curve on these points, that they're 50-foot lots. The applicant has believed that they've had 150 feet of lake shore, you know, it's in their paperwork that they've had for as long as they've owned the property. However, the requirements are to follow the new regulations, well, they're not new, they're new in relation to when this was platted, but the current regulations are to have a minimum lot width of 75 feet if you're going to create a new lot. If you have more than one lot owned in common and you want to divide it, you need to meet the current requirement as much as possible, and if that involves then, you know, all three lots, you would need to do that. The minimum requirement is 75 feet of lot width. They do not have that, and that is because when the property was platted, these lot lines are not all parallel to each other, they are off a little bit, and what happens with that then is when the property was surveyed this year, which we advised the applicant that they would need to do to demonstrate that they have enough lot width to divide it, the survey shows that they indeed do not have enough lot width. The ordinance requires that lots, lake shore lots owned in common, when you are dividing them on this particular type of lake, which is recreational development lake, that you meet lot width at two locations, at the setback line, which is, the front setback is at 30 feet, and then also at the 75-foot setback from the ordinary high watermark. So in two locations, you need to have that width. And the reasons for this, from a shoreline standpoint, from a state overall shoreline standpoint, is that they want to create properties that are even, instead of having a lot of properties come to a point where you've got a lot of activity happening at the lake shore. Shoreline management requirements were adopted by the state to protect the whole shoreline habitat, and that involves land within 1,000 feet of a of a public water. So in this case, since they are short, a little more than a foot and a half or about a foot and a half for each property, the only way for them to divide this property into two parcels is to seek a variance from the city of Burnsville to do that. Variances, again, are different than other applications, the state statute and also city council policy, which the policy was attached to your Planning Commission background. They require that in order to grant a variance, you need to look at what is known as practical difficulties, and there needs to be a finding that practical difficulties exist on the property in order to grant a variance. In addition to that, the Planning Commission and council need to look at is what the applicant wants to do reasonable. So there are a couple of different factors here. Practical difficulties are associated with something that is unique to the property itself. For instance, if we had wooded areas that we're trying to preserve and we're looking for a different width to protect wooded areas, that would be a situation. If the wooded areas were unique to the property with respect to the adjacent properties or other areas in the neighborhood, so you're looking for some type of a physical characteristic that's associated with the practical difficulty. The statute specifically identifies that economic considerations alone cannot be the basis for granting a variance. In this application, because there are no other characteristics other than the desire of the applicant to create two buildable parcels where there has been one all of these years, that is the only practical difficulty we have. It's related to economic, economic circumstances, and from that standpoint, does not satisfy the requirement of the statute or the variance policy adopted by the city council. In the staff report, we did identify that the shoreline regulations have gone through a number of updates over the years. They were adopted, promulgated by the state back in the 1960s, cities, counties, townships, anyone who has a public water within their jurisdiction is required to adopt shoreline standards. The state DNR is the administrative agency for shoreline regulations. They adopt a model ordinance, then they send that out to the various cities. Cities work with the DNR to basically adopt their language, the model language, as a local ordinance, and then the city is responsible to administer it, but the DNR does have review authority over all of the applications. So in this case, because it is a shoreline application, again, something within 1,000 feet of the lake, we are required to notify Department of Natural Resources, and they have review authority, they do not have the authority to approve or deny applications. In this particular case, we did send the notification to the DNR, and we've received no response from them at all. So there is nothing back from them, how they feel with regard to this application. Nonetheless, we did satisfy our requirement by sending it to them, and we also need to send, whatever the council's ultimate decision is, will need to be sent to DNR also, and they can, I believe that they do have some authority to appeal if they want to. I don't know of a situation where that has ever happened in my 30 years of practicing. In terms of the site itself, the applicant does have an interested buyer for the property, and what they would like to do is to be able to develop one of the parcels and then hold on to the other parcel for future, possible either to sell it in the future to someone else to develop, or perhaps to develop themselves. And we did include with the packet, there were some renderings that were provided. This is an example of what they would like to to build on on the property. We believe that regardless if the variance is granted or not, the end subject site will be large enough, be it two parcels or one parcel, that there should be able to be buildings, homes built on this property without needing any other variances. The lots are very deep, so they do meet setback standards, which again are 75 feet from the ordinary high watermark of the lake. What this aerial photo shows is we did take a look at what are the property holdings within the vicinity or the general area of this application. And as you can see, the land holdings vary from site to site. Most of the lots out here that are the lake shore lots are at least two lots combined, some have three or more lots combined. There is one that was built, I believe in 2000, just to the east of this site, that was on an existing 50-foot wide lot in this location. With that, the reason for providing this is to say, is this something that is out of character, to leave the parcel buildable as it has been used in the past for one building? And it is a large parcel, over 45,000 square feet, so it's over an acre in size. However, when you look at the adjacent properties, they also have large lots, and if you were to divide this into two parcels, they're actually, both parcels would be smaller than those abutting to the east and west. There's one larger, commonly held property, which is on the very western part of the plat, which is over 58,000 square feet. This is multiple lots that were combined some number of years ago with a home that was built on the property. This application did go to the Parks and Natural Resources Commission last week. They did take a look at it. Parks and Natural Resource Commission evaluates applications on a different basis than Planning Commission. Their interest is looking at things in terms of natural resource impacts and parks. From the Planning Commission standpoint, we look at it from the impacts related to the comprehensive plan and the zoning ordinance. The Parks and Natural Resource Commission recommended that the variance be denied, and the rationale for that was that there was one person that dissented, they did not give their reason for dissenting from that vote, but overall, and generally speaking, the rationale was that they have spent, and the city has spent, a lot of money and resources working on stormwater ponding and other improvements to improve water quality throughout the city. We've bought properties and installed new stormwater ponds, we've made improvements. One of the things that affects water quality is development adjacent to the lake shore, in their opinion. They felt that it kind of went against the the grain or the perspective that they have been working so hard to grant variance to allow smaller lots than even the minimum requirements. Consider. minimum requirements, considering all of the work that they have done for water quality improvements. In terms of the application itself, we do have, I believe, some individuals that are here to speak toward this application. From a staff perspective, the recommendation from staff is to deny the application. It's a minimum standard. This is insufficient. It doesn't meet the minimum standard. If this were not a lake shore property, the city's standard R1 width is eighty feet. We negotiated with DNR to allow to go down to seventy-five feet when someone has multiple substandard lots of record in order to allow for reasonable use of property and development. That seventy-five was something that was negotiated, and this is even below that. And from a staff perspective, again, looking at practical difficulty, the city council policy for granting variances, the application does not meet those tests, and we would therefore recommend denial of the application. With that, I can stand for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Garrus, for your presentation. Commissioners? Commissioner Levy?
Conceivably, if the request is denied, three lots, very small lots, could be built on with three long, narrow homes. No?
No. No, because the lots are owned in common, they cannot be built on individually. So, yeah. It would be either it's one lot, or if the variance is granted, they could have two.
Understood.
Correct.
Any other questions, Commissioner?
Yeah, you mentioned, and the applicant might have a better answer for this, that, well, two things. First off, you said that we notified within three hundred and fifty feet. Were there any comments back?
We received a phone call from an interested individual, I believe the next door lot owner, to the east, just inquiring about what the application is. Other than that, we've not received any other comments. There was some representation at the PNRC meeting recommending to deny the variance.
Okay. You mentioned that the landowner has sold off land out of a larger parcel, and this is the remnant?
That was years and years ago.
Sure, but there was a larger parcel that...
They owned, from what they advised me, they owned many more lots within the development.
Contiguous to this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, and over the years, they've sold it. The adjacent properties, I think, have been developed in the sixties, seventies, and some in the eighties. So it's been, it's been, excuse me, these three parcels have been owned in common since the shoreline ordinance was first adopted in eighteen eighty-four.
Sure. I guess the direction I'm going is that this essentially is what's left of their previous sales, and this is the box they've left themselves with. Okay. And currently, the DNR has an eighty-foot requirement, but the city has negotiated a seventy-five-foot requirement.
The DNR model ordinance is eighty feet with twenty thousand square foot lots. We were allowed flexibility for the city of Burnsville because of our existing development patterns on recreational development lakes to go down to a seventy-five-foot lot width with twelve thousand square feet of lot area. But then also, the city adopted more restrictive impervious surface and stormwater requirements than the state model ordinance.
Okay, and then I was just going to look at the map showing the adjacent lots. And without getting into exact, all the rest of these, basically, to the left, the thirty-seven, four thirty-eight, the thirty-two, four thirty-seven, and then going the other way presumably, the thirty-seven, two nineteen, these all lots for part of the original, the original land holding of this applicant?
I don't know. They did not tell me which specific properties that they owned, just that they had at one time owned more lots within the area.
Thank you.
Any other, Commissioner Levy?
I understand the current ordinance applies in terms of lot size.
Yes.
Are any of the nearby, not necessarily adjacent, but nearby lots less than seventy-five feet? Do you know?
There is one lot that was developed back in two thousand. It's kind of hard to see on here. This was actually a fifty-foot wide lot, but it was not owned in common with adjacent properties.
Okay. Goes back to that question.
Correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Workman?
And the PNRC's denial relates to the effect of having two houses as opposed to one house. Is that just their general usage of shoreline and recreational use that would deter from the naturally occurring shoreline that already exists, or? I'm trying to understand.
Our staff, we don't normally attend the PNRC meeting, so I can't advise you as to what their intent was. I was at this meeting, and from what I gathered and from what I've seen from the other staff is that there was a concern that if you allow two lots to be developed and they don't even meet the minimum seventy-five-foot standard, they felt that that is something that is precedent, per se, that they would not like to see happen. At minimum, they felt that they should meet the ordinance. In general terms, when you talk about water quality, and I'm sure that you've seen this in the news recently, a lot of the impacts associated with water quality have to do with the amount of development adjacent to the water bodies. And in a case such as this, there would no doubt be impervious surface associated if you develop the two lots as opposed to the one lot. We don't have a specific development plan in front of us, so you can't say for sure what that would be. But just in general, the fewer, the fewer homes that you have on the lake shore, the less amount of grading that you need to do, the less amount of vegetation removal you need to do, probably the less amount of impervious surface, and those are the things that are contributing factors to water quality in the lakes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Ms. Garrus. This application does not require a public hearing, but we will have a hearing. Those persons interested in speaking on this application are free to do so. So if there's anyone in the audience who would like to come up and address the commission on this matter, please do so now. We ask that you give your name and address for the records.
Hi, I'm Mike Overston, Seventeen Seventeen Keller Lake Drive in Burnsville, five-five-three-zero-six.
Welcome, Mr. Overston.
Thanks for having me. Yes, this shirt does glow in the dark, just in case you're wondering. I'm this prospective buyer. Got a closing actually later this week on these lots. And our plan is, when we originally looked at this, we did see the parcel A and the parcel B, and then noticed that, you know, the widths were, you know, wide enough at the lake shore, but then, you know, narrowed the way they had to work on there. Obviously, we're about eighteen inches, I think, off on the two lots. If you take it all, you know, and split it right in the middle, you're about eighteen inches off there. Our plan right now is to build on the far east lot, which would be parcel B that you see there. Obviously, you have the setbacks and all that fun stuff there that we'll meet the guidelines with. The parcel A, don't have any formal plans with that yet. More than likely, we would either just hang on to that piece, so we do have basically a full acre on the lot there or on the lake to enjoy, or, you know, we could potentially, you know, sell that as a buildable lot if the variance goes through in the future. But for now, we would be basically leaving it as is. All the vegetation, all the trees, everything would be staying there for now because we don't have any, like I said, formal plans for what we're going to do with that. It would be, you know, a few years down the road before we would entertain even, you know, selling the lot or doing anything like that with it. I know that some of the concerns were the square footage, so if we do cut it in half, you know, you're going to cut that forty-five thousand square feet down, and it's going to be smaller than the lots adjacent to it. We do lose a little bit just because of the way the road, that Pershing Circle Road goes there, so we don't have the length away from the lake that the lot, especially to the east, has or the couple lots to the east have there. So that eats up some of the square footage, but, you know, they would still be, you know, roughly, you know, twenty, twenty-two thousand five hundred or so, and I know there's, down the line, there's a few that are quite a bit smaller than that, so. But if you guys have any questions for me, I'm more than happy to answer.
My question to you, you understand the reason why staff is recommending to the commission not to approve the application?
Yeah, yeah, yep, yep. So their concerns are definitely valid. I understand that.
Thank you. Any questions? Thank you very much. Any other person from the audience who would like to come up? Sir, please give your name and address for the records, and welcome.
My name is Kurt Anistvett. I live at eight-fifty Blue Will Bay Road, which is about eight houses to the west of this particular parcel. I have lived on Crystal Lake for thirty-two years and was the president of the Crystal Lake Improvement Association during the twenty-five years, during that time of twenty-five years. I was the president when we wrote the ordinance, when the DNR had us change the ordinance and come up with a new shoreline ordinance. And it did go from eighty feet down to seventy-five feet, and when a lot doesn't even meet the seventy-five feet, it should not be approved. You know, there's no hardship in this case. We didn't take land from anyone. The only reason the fifty-foot lot is there is that was landlocked, and that's why we couldn't take that property, and that's why they were allowed to build. But everyone else who has contiguous lots together is required to either meet the seventy-five if they ever want to split it or not split it. And these are two feet short on one and a foot and a half short on the other one. They're not six inches, they're not eight inches. It's substantial. There is an environmental issue that we're concerned with with the lake. Of course, there's more boat traffic, there's more runoff, there's more congestion. All of those were taken into account when we wrote the ordinance. There would be no reason that we should create two substandard lots in this situation. There's absolutely no reason to do that. Like I say, we have no hardship. The DNR's eighty feet, we're seventy-five feet, and everyone, including Marlaus Johnson, the original owner of this property, knew of those requirements when they were put in place. She was well informed, and I encourage the commissioner to deny the request.
Thank you very much, sir. Any questions for Ms. Anistvett? Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Oh, just a second. Commissioner Benke?
Yeah, I realized you'd said that you were president of the Crystal Lake Association. Can you recall any other lots around the lake in your tenure as president or on the board where this has come up before?
Well, there's the Whatkey property, and they have not been able to divide that into they were required by law, again, or by the city, to maintain it as one lot. Those on the point were, of course, combined altogether. That's a big parcel on the point where they have six or eight. The water's too high there, and so none of those are buildable, so they all had to combine them into one. You know, Tim Manning, who's here, owns the lot directly to the west of this, about a hundred and sixty-five feet of property. And to my knowledge, he was and still is the only person who could possibly divide his property and has no intention of doing it. I won't speak for him, but I know has no intention of dividing it.
Sure. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate you, your contribution. Come on up, sir. Just give your name and address for the records, and welcome.
Thank you. My name is Tim Manning. I live at nine-eighty Pershing Circle. That is the property, three sixty-five, excuse me, three fifty-five-foot lot immediately to the west of the property in question. I've lived there forty-eight years in two weeks from now. Beautiful spot, and we think one of the prettier ones on the lake, for that matter. Mention was made of Marlaus. Actually, it goes back further than that, that we're aware of. Marlaus's father, George, and his wife were coming out on average grass cutting, but that's, in the forty-eight years we've owned it, no one has stayed overnight in what was cabins at one time, except for some drug-using people who got in there and kind of raised havoc with it. We, on Marlaus's behalf, were asked, both by her and her father's stepfather, I should say, George, if we would keep an eye on it because they were never there. We did that, but we weren't able to deal with the drug users that were coming in there in the middle of the night. So, again, I have three fifty-five-foot lots, so I got fifteen feet more than I need to divide mine into two. I'm the only property in there that can do that. All the others were based on a nominal fifty feet, and there was also a survey in that original plat in nineteen twenty-three. I guess I don't want to really drag this on. I just want you to vote no.
Well, thank you so much. We appreciate your coming and sharing your experience and, you know, in living there for so long. We appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other person like, come on up? Please give, mention your name and address for the records.
Hello, Commission. My name is Sarah Kiefer. I live at one-three-eight-two-zero Shirley Drive, and I'm here as a member of the community that's concerned about the, about the subdivision. But for the record, I am also the chair of the Parks and Natural Resources Commission. So I'd just like to share my personal feelings about the subdivision. Again, I was part of the commission that decided that we wanted to deny the variance. Burnsville's owns, ends and outcomes statement reads that the development occurs in an environmentally sensitive manner, preserving and restoring natural resources. So this variance would be in opposition to Burnsville's own stated goals as well as the DNR's model ordinance. It's simply in opposition to the integrity and the intention of what our goals are for the environment. And we are, I am concerned that it would set a precedence of allowing more variances around the city that, and that they would be done for economic and financial circumstances and not with concern with what is, in best practices, what, for the environment. So those are my concerns, so I, again, urge you to deny the variance for those reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for serving.
Thank you.
The commission. Appreciate that. Anyone else? Okay, going once, going twice, seeing no other person coming up, we'll close the hearing. Commissioners, over to you. Commissioner Workman?
Did I put you on the spot? No. Okay. Did that last week, though. You know, it's a tough decision, but we're talking smaller amounts, but we're, you know, we have things in place and we need to follow those, so.
Okay. Commissioner Levy?
For eighteen inches or twenty inches or whatever it is...
For eighteen inches or twenty inches or whatever it is, that doesn't bother me as much as the precedent that's being set that the Parks, Commissioner mentioned, the, I can just see all kinds of other variance requests coming in. Well, you did it there. I cannot support it.
Thank you.
Sure. I think the observation that a variance by definition, I don't think, can create a precedence. It does have to be a unique feature of the property, but I don't see what's happening here as unique. Quite honestly, so many of the other lots are, are joined in common as well, and because of that, it, it's not a unique situation to me. The next part of this is that if they own more land here and they subdivided this, they should have looked ahead, knowing that they wanted to subdivide all to the end. I said that backward, actually. If they would have wanted to subdivide this all the way to the end, a prudent surveyor, a prudent developer, to use that term generally, would have looked ahead and done what is called in the industry due diligence and known what's there. Quite honestly, I see this happen frequently in business, that somebody looks at the angle and assumes it's the lot width, and it, it's not. Lot width is measured perpendicular to the property lines. And, and it's unfortunate, but geometry is pretty rigid, so I can't support this either.
Thanks, Your Excellency. I think I, I agree with all three of the commissioners, that I too will not be able to support this application. The precedent that it will create will not be good for lake shore properties, not only in Keller Lake, but all other lakes that we have in, in Burnsville. There was no due hardship, in my opinion, and I don't think the, this application qualifies for us supporting it, so I too will not support the application. Do I hear a motion?
Right. Okay. Chair?
Go ahead, Commissioner Banky.
I would move that the Planning Commission recommend the City Council denial of the lot with variance application for this parcel. Nine ninety, Pershing.
Motion, move to decline, to, not to support the application? Seconded by Commissioner Levy. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Pass on a four-zero vote to, not to recommend the application to the, to recommend to the, to the City Council that we not approve the application. This matter will go to the City Council on August third, the regular meeting. To those who came out and spoke, thank you so much. To the applicant, you have an opportunity to go to the City Council and make your case. This commission, made up of volunteers, and from our point of view, we could not recommend the application to the City Council approval. So, thanks to all of you who came out and spoke tonight. Okay. Next, item eight, a public hearing, application from Walzer Real Estate LLC for a PUD amendment to allow an open sales rental lot without a structure at one four nine zero zero Buckhill
Mr. Chair, you had indicated you're on a schedule.
Yes, I have.
We can, we can ask Mr.
I can keep this abbreviated.
Like. Your choice. We can ask Mr. Banky to, Commissioner Banky to...
You know what? We can get it in five minutes. Go ahead. I'll take a chance here. I have to take someone to the airport, so.
Ooh, airport, that's...
Go ahead, Mr. Williams.
Yes, okay, so I will just skip over the formalities here and move ahead. This is regarding the Plan Unit Development Amendment to Allow an Open Sales Rental Lot Without a Structure. Just a brief background, the open, open sales rental lot, am I... Okay. Excuse me, or was I... Okay, well, sorry again. The site is approximately three point three four acres. It's owned B three under a PUD. The adjacent parcels are B three, PUD, B two, and R three B, PUD. They're looking to demolish the existing, the applicant is looking to demolish the existing used car facility to accommodate a new inventory storage lot. The proposed changes would consist of a new, new parking lot island, striping, lighting, as well as adjustments to the curb line and additional landscaping. The building, this is the demolition plan, so the building in the center of the lot will be demolished in order to provide a surface, um, storage, excuse me, sales rental lot, rather than storage, sales rental lot in place of the sales lot without a structure. This, the advantages to doing this is that it will provide an opportunity to redevelop the property and allow Walzer increased onsite storage capacity for its dealership in the interim while it looks for a potential new brand to locate at the site. There are a few deviations. One is, of course, the lack of a structure on the site. Another is it exceeds a fifty thousand square foot limit for an individual lot, and we are proposing, the applicant proposes a reduction in parking lot landscaping as well. Under the proposal, there will be impervious, impervious surface coverage of approximately seventy-three point, seventy-three percent. The green area required for this land use is twenty-five percent. In total, the lot has twenty-six point seven. The green area within the parking lot, the requirement for a, for a sales lot is eight percent, and the proposal will have five point three percent green area, so below the requirement. The, this is a PUD amendment that will extend until August first, two thousand twenty, at which point the lot will need to be redeveloped or incorporated into, into the adjacent property to the north, which has a principal structure. I believe I want the landscaping. Excuse me, here's the landscaping. Some of the deviations that have been requested, again, exceed the twenty-five, well, do not meet the eight percent interior parking, uh, green space. However, there are a substantial number of overstory trees, most of which meet the He Island requirement. The applicant has proposed to put screening in the form of, or landscaping, rather, in the form of ornamental grasses and flowers along the eastern property line. The reason for this is there are utilities underneath that, that area, so larger plants or other screening is not possible, so we think it's appropriate to make an exception In terms of the lighting, gener, excuse me, we don't have a photometric. There, generally, it's fine, except there is a bit of spill in excess of one-foot candle onto, on, beyond the western, excuse me, the eastern property, property, property line. There are no issues with storm, stormwater management. It disturbs less than one acre, and therefore, it does not need to meet the city's storm, stormwater management requirements. The staff recommends, the Planning Commission recommended to the City Council the approval of a PUD amendment to allow an open sales rental lot at the location with the following conditions. The applicant add additional overstory trees or move an existing overstory tree so that it's within the four-foot to ten-foot perimeter from the interior curbside. The applicant will need to work with staff to revise the lighting plan, to make sure that there is an excess spillage onto Buckhill Road. The PUD amendment will be valid, again, for five years until August first, two thousand twenty, by which time the subject site will need to be redeveloped or incorporated to the property in the north. And the landscaping deviations granted with this application will need to be corrected if the property is redeveloped, or, excuse me, will need to be corrected, yes, if the property is redeveloped or replatted with the parcel to the north. And I will leave it there for any questions from the commission.
Thank you, Mr. Williams, for your presentation. Commissioners? Commissioner Banky?
The grade chains along the north line, and that certainly makes it difficult for trying to incorporate this into the property of the north.
That's right.
That, I mean, obviously, that's a redevelopment issue, but I, you know, right now, it definitely feels like it's a separate lot compared to the parcel to the south, and I apologize for running this off a little bit here. And then the other thing, too, I guess I'll get them both questions out. Were they simply going to demo the building and then repave the area? I see there's an island or two in there, too, or are they planning on removing and repaving the entire lot?
The, the applicant is removing and repaving the entire lot and placing new islands in, in terms of the grading, I'll have to defer to the applicant in terms of what a potential redevelopment or, or, excuse me, integration with the property in the north would entail. The hope is, though, that the applicant will be able to attract a new brand with the old site demolished, so more easily attract a new brand.
Yeah, I could see the vacant parcel being more, more in line for that, definitely, so. Mr. Phillips, if you could, on the grade. Okay, I, I just need to know.
Welcome back, Mr. Phillips.
Welcome back. Very briefly, this property was already platted with the Honda building to the north, and we separated it a couple of years ago because it's an opportunity for another business. We'd like to keep that, that's why we haven't planted any trees in the center for now.
Agreed.
And, and, and it is more attractive, the fear we were getting, we've been trying to market this for a couple, three years now, and the problem we have is the manufacturers are afraid we'd leave the old building. So by clearing the old building, we have a more attractive site to offer to the other dealer. We hope to redevelop it as another dealership, so.
Sure. Very good.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Any other questions, Mr. Williams? Commissioner Workman?
Very quickly, there's no mesh fencing or security on this lot. This will be an open lot?
That's correct, yes. It does, as opposed to the previous application, which was storage, this is a sales rental lot, and so it, it doesn't require a hundred percent screening.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Levy?
So the salesmen hang out in the building to the north, which is the dealership, I assume?
Yes.
Okay, and then they walk uphill to the, the storage area, sales area, to do their work?
We have a grand staircase going up.
Okay. I'm not, but I'm out there in the winter.
Thank you, Commissioner Levy. Any other questions to Mr. Williams? Thank you, Mr. Williams. This application requires a public hearing. I now open the public hearing. Anyone from the audience who would like to address the commission on this application can do so now. Seeing no one coming, I close the public hearing. Commissioners? Any discussion?
I have none.
Do I hear a motion?
Could we have it put up?
It's over there, though. There you go.
Commissioner Levy?
I move that the Planning Commission recommend to the City Council the approval of the PUD amendment to allow open sales and rental lot without a structure at one four nine zero zero Buckhill Road with the following conditions, following four conditions. The applicant shall add an additional overstory tree or move an existing one to an area between four feet and ten feet from the curb, and I'm not going to read the rest of that because it's in our, our notes. The applicant shall work with staff to submit a revised lighting plan. The provisional use, lost the word. The PUD amendment is valid for a five-year period until August first, two thousand twenty. The landscaping deviations granted with this application will need to be corrected with any redevelopment or replating of the parcel.
Thank you, Commissioner Levy, for the motion. Seconded by Commissioner Workman. All in favor? Please say aye. Pass on a four-zero vote. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Our next item is updates. Any updates? Just to note that the next meeting is scheduled for Monday, August tenth, two thousand fifteen, regular time at six thirty PM. I would just like to congratulate Commissioner Levy and Commissioner Workman for their commitment to serve on this commission. It's, it's an honor to serve, and I appreciate your joining the team here. We have a good team. I wish you guys success. I know you're enjoying it already, so I can tell. So, best of luck.
Thank you.
Any other updates? Before we close, just wanted to thank our viewing and listening audience for joining us and for your interest in the Planning Commission. This, this commission, we worked very hard to make Burnsville the best place to live, the best, best place to own a business, the best place to work, and the best place to shop. So, continue your interest in Burnsville. I hear, do I hear a motion to adjourn?
So move.
Move by Commissioner Banky. Seconded by Commissioner Levy. All in favor? Pass on a four-zero vote. Good night, everyone.